Thank you all for being here today. It's, I think it's great to see so many people at our board meetings. It's different one that's completely empty and I appreciate having everybody here. It's great. Just, just as a matter of housekeeping, really quick, we're gonna have some, I'm just gonna say this first so I don't forget. We will have input time for the, for the public comments. We have three people that are gonna comment. Two of them are about the same, an item that is already on our agenda. So I'm gonna hold those two till we're speaking of that particular curriculum item on the agenda. So when we get to public input, we'll have one early on meeting and then two later. Just, just as a matter of housekeeping. So also like to just point out that I really appreciate having the mission vision and goals in the back of the room and hope that you all looked at those when you came in and realized or understand that we're, we are doing our very best to, to do just what it says and promote, to promote high achieving and responsible citizens and to be the highest achieving rural school district in the Idaho. And I think we're working really hard to get to that point and with our administrators and reports, we're, we're doing a lot better job, I think, to understand what's happening within our district and, and our students. With that, Mr. Doolin, I'm gonna turn the time over to you and your administrators to give your reports.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. Two quick things from my perspective in reference to soup report. We were notified yesterday, or last, last Thursday, that the high school and CTE department specifically, they found 75,000 more dollars for, for our CTE department, which is, which is a win, if you ask me. So I've tasked Drew and the CTE teachers to see where we can spend that money at. So I'll be reporting back to you guys on where we decide what's best for the district.
That's, that's quite fine.
Yes, sir. Number two, dealing with money as well, that 97,900 dollars for our safety and security grant, we do actually now have the money in hand. So we're able now to go back to the contractor and tell the contractor, here's, here's half of it up front to go out and buy your supplies. And that's what we've done now. He's, he's doing that. So he came out here and get started on the projects that we've talked about as far as our number one priority, safety and security for our students and staff. So with that said, I will now like to turn my, rest of my time over to, first of all, Dr. Basher. As he, he briefs us on his findings for our facilities, which he went through about a month ago now, and we've been looking forward to this briefing. So, Dr. Basher?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Doolin. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight and to present my findings of your facilities. Want the Board to know that I did include all eight, just as you requested. Eight different facilities and schools that are included in the plan. And you have a hard copy in front of you that I'm gonna walk you through. I'm more than glad to have any of your questions as we go, or at the end, if I don't get them answered, be more than glad to answer them at that point. So the first thing I'd like to do is to thank your eight most people. Michael was gone at the time, but Eric spent about a half a day plus with me going through all the schools and reviewing. And then Mr. Doolin and Eric and Michael all had a chance to review my findings to see if, if there was anything in there that I had made error on. And they got back to me that it looked accurate, so no changes were made from the original that I put out to what you have in front of you. The table of contents gives you the 10 items that's included in the plan. The plan now will, upon your approval of the plan, Mr. Doolin has an original to have be signed by the Board Chairman and Eric and himself to then be mailed into the Department of Building and Safety. That will put you in compliance through 2033 with a review of year five, just to see how things have changed and if there's any upgrades been done, then those could be noted. The plan, as you guys know, Board members know, is something required by Idaho statute now that says that every district will submit a plan. And the plans are based upon your opportunity to see how your schools are graded. When we go through and look at the scores, and I'm gonna go through that with you, but it is made from the standpoint that you or desire as Board members is that all schools come out to be a good grade. If they're lacking or have areas that need to be upgraded, then the good drops to fair, poor, or unsatisfactory. And having been in middle school district as a superintendent for 15 years, my goal with the Board was always to work hard, upgrade our schools to get them to good. When I retired, all seven schools were good. And that's the goal I had for Mr. Doolin too, is to, the improvements that are necessary there and make them. The ones that the Board feel aren't necessary, then hold on those, but otherwise work on them. The first document is a little bit of a description and history of the district. You people know that much more detail than I do. That's just part of the plan, so that includes a little bit of a narrative on the district itself. Then the next part is your purpose. And the purpose is, as I stated, is for you as Board members to take a good glance at your schools, to see what areas are not considered good. And if they're not considered good, how much of an upgrade will it take to bring them to good? And then lastly there to develop some budget items that I set up for you over a year and five years and 10 years, if you desire to budget it out that way. The next sheet is a accumulation of your facilities or cell. And that talks about the, the ones that I reviewed, the years on them, the age, the land acreages that they sit on. And so when you look at that sheet, your building's age to addition about 438, which is, some of them are over. Your oldest one there is your middle school gym, and then your two elementaries are 68, 67 years of age, which means that anytime you're at 50 or greater, you're gonna have other responsibilities that long-term maintenance and whatnot is gonna be noticeable with the age of the building. The square footages are also listed there. You have about a third of a million of square footage, 305,000 square feet total. And I put the column over on your far right to show you as you talk to patrons, as you do upgrades to your facility, the thing I always stress is this, that you're protecting their interests, you're protecting their assets, keeping their schools up and in good stead, just as you would your home. And so as you make improvements to their facilities, I say their because they're the ones that helped allow the facilities to occur in your school district, you're at about 120 million. And so if you had some facilities burned down, such as what I did, then over on the far right would be the amount that you could intend to spend either to collect insurance on or to rebuild a school. And as you can see, as the square footage has increased there, your high school being about 100,000 square feet is a pretty pricey building to replace, 37 million. And today, a lot of high schools are being replaced at a higher value than that. Middleton High School, when we built it, was 40, then it jumped to 60 at Richview, and then when Hawaii copied it, it went to 90 million. So they jump up. The next sheet is one of three sheets that I did for you on enrollment. Mr. Doolin gave me the actual enrollments in the school district based on 10 years. And I then used a calculation method called cohort survival. The light gray, as you can see, was used to give me a formula. So if I found that in a case that kindergarten, for instance, if the line along there showed that we had a dropout or a reduction of numbers, then that would give me a formula that said that due to the fact that in some school districts, maybe they go K3, and then fourth grade, they go somewhere else. That wasn't the case in yours. Yours is pretty true all the way through. Your, your retention of the kids from one year to the next year by grade is, is pretty constant. So it didn't require me to do any extra calculation, but cohort survival gave me that opportunity. I ran your figures based upon past, as you can see there, anything that came into the negative, I put in red for you. And that's zero percent, meaning that I moved everybody forward from the last year, 22, 23, into 23, 24 currently. And it shows that your enrollment are dropping a little bit due to the fact that you have some classes that are becoming smaller. Your smaller grade levels, a little bit of reduction as they go through from where you did. At one time, for instance, you had 450 K through threes, and then that dropped a little bit. You had about 243 4 through 5s and around 350 6 through 8, which is about where you're at now. So with zero percent growth, your enrollment that you could use, your business manager could follow along, I used that extensively in Middleton to give me a guide, is pretty much stable there with it. Take that. You're gonna have a few drops here and there. The second page is a 2% growth. I wanted to give you an idea of saying, okay, if you had a housing group, if you had some reason that your enrollment would jump by 2%, how would that affect your future grades? And then in a minute, I'm gonna show you capacities, but you can see that most of the red dried up. You did have a drop in 23, 24 from where you did, even with 2%. But from that point on, you had some growth and you show out 10 years that you actually have about 65 more suits. And the reason I bring that up is that we look at capacity, that's things you're gonna need to look at to address space for kids as they come along. The third sheet is one that is used in case you have quite a bit of growth, 5% growth. And that may or may not occur, but as you can see, even the first year jumps up 31, and then you grow as high as 152. So whether that occurs, that's things you guys will know, Mr. Doolin will know from subdivisions and whatnot that I have no clue on, but I wanted to give you those three scenarios, 0, 2, and 5, to show you what ifs. The next sheet is building enrollments and capacities. So each of your schools, your two elementaries, middle and high school, even though I evaluated eight that didn't include for capacities because they're not standalone schools, but the Pioneer Elementary there at 412 currently, and I didn't get anything, my enrollment, Mr. Doolin gave me, has been a while, so it could be higher or lower. But your capacities are based upon the formula that says, we took account of all your regular classrooms and excluded your special ed, your smaller classrooms, it didn't count as a regular sized classroom, and then we used an average of what you have in there. And so you can see that you got about 90% of the rooms taken in that school. So what that tells me is if I laid down, which you guys could do, I laid down your 2%, your 2% increase that I gave you would be almost 90-some percent. Your 5% would be that you would be full plus. And your Park Elementary School at 75, that gives you a little more fluctuation. Your middle school at 61 has the most space available for growth. And then your high school is the fullest of them all at 90. So as you look at 2 and 5%, again, you say to yourself, okay. The formulas for space can be a variety of things, planning in advance with additions, crowding up, doing what I did in Middleton during the fire, I brought in 10 double Y portables, which is not a good solution, but it's a stock gap. And many districts west Ada have, I think they have 150 portables that they use and move all the time. So that's another suggestion that's not a real good long-term one because they don't last and they're expensive. I think Middleton are paying a million and a half for each of those portables now. They've come up too, when I bought them, eight years ago, they were about 400,000. So that tells you what the construction inflation does. The next sheet is a blank VCEF. That gives you an idea of what the instrument was that we evaluated each of your eight schools and facilities with. And you can see on there that good, fair, poor, and unsatisfactory are weighted. Good is rated to, for instance, under foundation, a 12. And when this was developed, I was part of a state study that actually did every, we hired people to help us, but we did every school district in the state of Idaho back in 94. And we gave legislature a detailed report showing about 270 million dollars worth of need of facilities, and they dismissed that report, didn't give it a lot of consideration, thought it was more of a fluff than it was a reality, which we disagreed. But we use this form. This form is used presently in 13 states still, a little bit of tweaks on it. It was required before we, the legislature, to make sure that it was both valid and reliable. So you have good information with what I presented there that says it's gonna be accurate just because it's been true and tested in architects, engineers, and people that weighted this thing, did that with the standpoint saying, we feel that foundation structure, for instance, a 12 versus trim of two is a difference in 10 points. And so when we're finished with this, we take the score that scores, subtract that score from 100. So if a building rated 80, we subtract that from 100 and say that 20% of that building needs to be upgraded to bring it back to good. And then on the bottom there, those are some scores that I give based upon handicap access. And what that means is it's gotta have 100% of capability, everything from door openers to restroom spaces to signage, to strobe lights. And if any piece of handicapped accessibility is not there, then it's rated no rather than yes. And then that's a decision you guys make, whether you wanna add things as you go along. The next piece is the scoring table. So if you wanna spend some time and go through and look at my sheets and say, okay, how come that school was rated fair with a score of 19? You can look on this scoring sheet, which was again used in that state study, and says, okay, exterior has to have a score between 28 and 31 to get you to good. If it's 10 or less, for instance, it's unsatisfactory. And below there, our barometer is 50. If a school scores 50 or lower, that's something that I recommend to the Board and Superintendent that says probably not in your best interest to put a lot of money in that to upgrade that because at 50, you're still gonna have an old structure, you're gonna have a lot of old things in it, even though you do work in it, it's not gonna be the same as a new school. So starting out with your eight schools, first one Pioneer, there's your rating all the way through. I did, for your sake, anything that did not score good, over on the far right side, I wrote a comment for you so that you could see what the D-DUP, deduct was. And so the first thing you can see there that roofs and windows, a little older, and if the windows did not rate out high and good, that meant they're either single pane or something needed to be upgraded with those windows, and that happened in a few of them. So overall, the score of Pioneer, being as old as it was, scored good, 88 points, which means that it was 12 off of being in good condition. If you turn to the next page, that's the calculation cost, saying, okay, there's your 88 score, subtract that from 100, we get 12. Multiplying it by 400, $400 per square foot may seem high to you, but again, that's what the contractors, the CMs that are out there doing work saying, still costing close to 400. We're being a little bit isolated from, you know, the larger cities, the 400 probably is a pretty good figure. The other one, if we drop it to 300, if it's a gym or if it is a shop, egg shop or something that doesn't require all the bells and whistles that a high school has in it that are more costly. So even though that school scored 88 because of the square footage there, it threw a price tag of about 2.9 million. You look at that and say, wow, that's a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but on the same token, if we go back to the original sheet that showed you what the original cost of that school was, 2.9 is a small figure compared to what it would take to build a new elementary completely. And that one, I think, was around 24 million. The next sheet is the Park Elementary. Park was one of them that scored a little lower. It and the old gym scored lower than most of the other ones, 66. You can see all the way down on the side there what the problem is, and most of the problem is 67 years of age, has age in there, and foundations start to crack and settle and whatnot as you get into that age of a school. Under lighting, I'd note that LEDs are now pretty much required by the safety people. So if you're not having LEDs, which this one didn't, I asked Eric each time how much LEDs have been replaced, and in this case, about 10% of the fixtures have LEDs in it. So there's something for the Board and Superintendent to consider, looking at grants or whatever you can do to switch over to LEDs, one for energy savings and two, better lighting and easier on the fixture long-term. The cost on that school is due to the fact that we got 34% upgrade. So you can see again, the formula is 100 minus the score, gives us a percent, and the percent is based upon what it takes to bring it back to good. 4.6 million, which is, you know, that's a little smaller school than Pioneer, but on the same token, a lot of other things that need to be upgraded besides it. So when we look at a score of that nature, 66, we say, well, it's about 50, but it's still a consideration for you and Board members and Mr. Doolin to look at that and say, down the road, if you need more space, is there, due to the fact that Park has a lot of levels in it too, as I went through, you know, for a handicapped child to get all the way through that, it's real challenging. And thinking down the road to add to that building, you're still having the inadequacy of a lot of levels, a lot of mobility problems in that school. So I guess my recommendation would be probably not gonna be a great thought to do a lot to this building, but think maybe that you would maybe look for another elementary or look to enlarge your Pioneer a little bit. But as far as that 66 score, it says that it's doable. It's close to 50, but on the same token, a lot of problems with that, if you can see over on the right side. The next sheet is on the middle one, and that one is based upon the year of 1980. It has some problems, but the score pretty good, 84, still not huge for ideas of upgrades, but on the same token, being the year that it was there, it has pretty good character. And the 1980 year that it was built there says that it's not old, but on the same token, or Mr. Doolin was principal there, he'd be more of an expert to me than what I did going through that building, but there are areas in there that need to be upgraded. Kitchen, for instance, has a lot of older equipment in there that that's something you need to budget for as you go along too, because that doesn't last long and causes problems that you go through. A lot of wood in that building as well. That's why that rated a fair because fire hazard with a lot of wood in a building is tougher. The cost on that middle school, about 3.7 million to upgrade it to good. Next one is your middle school auxiliary. That one is, is quite a bit older. It was built in '36, and you can tell the age on it, you can tell the conditions on it are, one of the ones that along with the one elementary are your lowest two of all your schools that they bared on, on grading. 63 is getting close to that 50 range again. So the things that, that auxiliary gym needs probably aren't gonna be within your best interest either to try to upgrade it due to the fact that you can see there walls and different things. The floor, for instance, is older and a lot of deals in there that are, are needed to be upgraded. Cost for upgrading that building is pretty high, 2.6, even though it's only 17,000 square feet, but a third of it needs to be upgraded to bring it to good. The next one is your high school, and your high school graded well, 84. Being built in '67, it is, you know, one of the ones that are a little bit newer. The kitchen equipment is fair in that building, not as bad as in that other one where it's older, but there's some, there's equipment in there that needs to be looked at to be replaced as well. LEDs, again, about 10% of them are started, so my thought process on, on that is that you get a plan for all your buildings on which ones you can start on and get as many LD, LEDs in there as you can, where you can whip them all with LEDs before you're through. The upgrade for the high school is 6 million, and the reason that is 6 million, even though it graded 84, is that I got a lot of square footage in there. You got almost 100,000 square foot, so naturally that's gonna cost you a little more than the others. Your high school auxiliary, there is one of the higher ones. It's a, it's a newer building, 2005. I remember when that was run as a bond and the pros and cons were talked about, and the process there was to put a walking path around the outside. It looks nice still as I went through that building, looks like a new building there. And I'm sure the patrons liked that building to give them access to walking around that outside of the gym. It has very few areas that aren't in good condition. LED lights, you know, would fix it up pretty well. The floor is wooden, so therefore it's more of a fire resistance, but nothing that is, is bad. So that building doesn't have to have a lot done to it. The lights are, are minimal there, the costs are minimal, and for about a half million dollars, if you did work in there, you'd have that building almost right back to where it was new. The next one is your egg building. That egg building is a 72, 6,000 square feet, in good shape, only 16% of it. There's a few things there that are older, such as roof. Roofs we look at, if they're about 20 years of age or older, then you need to consider, depending on what the ingredients is, it's up there, whether it's pile or whether it's EPDM, which is the materials that are used that you guys have. You need to start thinking about those because as maintenance try to repair those around the different vents and whatnot, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it causes more problems. And as we know, when we get leaky roofs, it's gonna cost a lot more expense as it comes through down into the insulation and into the school, which I found none of your schools that had any problem with leaks that, a lot of schools when I go into unfortunately has waste baskets collecting water. When we look at the roof, the roofs are in really poor shape, and the maintenance people are even afraid to get up there due to the structural integrity of the beams and whatnot on top. I found none of yours even close to that condition. I found none of yours even close to that, uh, condition. It, uh, upgraded one of the lesser amounts. Your auto is in good shape too, six thousand square feet, same size as the other one. Uh, the roof again is a little older, that twenty-five year range. Your upgrade is about eighteen on that thing and, uh, the increased cost on it is similar to your egg, egg increase to bring it up to par, so between the two of them, you got about three eighty-four on the one and four thirty on the other, so about a million among the, the two of them. The last sheet is, uh, accumulation of all your B C E Fs. That's your, I call it your final report card. That gives you all, all of the schools that I went through, and, uh, the thought process is that you rated eighty-one, and, you know, I commend the board and your administration for keeping your facilities upgraded and nice. Maintenance people do a good job in there. I can tell that they have been in, worked diligently. It's a tough thing when I go into districts that's run down and, you know, a lot of it is funding, but a lot of it too is just taking care of, having an eye out for it, and both of, uh, Michael and Eric, I'd say have a good feel for those buildings, and as I went through with Eric and addressed items for him, he made notes, but on the same token, he knew those were things he was going to address to superintendent and you people to upgrade. So if you look at the cost to upgrade all of those, you're about twenty million. You divide, as I said, to start with, our twenty million into ten years, you got two million a year to budget for those. You go five years, you got four million. You go over a couple of years, you got ten million, which is probably higher than any of those that you want without having to run some sort of a levy. But I'll stress this, your replacement costs are a hundred and twenty million, and, uh, your twenty million, you need to upgrade them. If people ask you, well, you know, twenty million seems high, look at that right below where I put that. Only seventeen percent of the total building values need to be upgraded to bring all your schools to good. And with your couple there, your middle school gym and your Park Elementary School in the sixties, seventeen percent is a low number. I've had as high as fifty percent, unfortunately, saying that half of their value, their schools needs to be worked on, which isn't the case in yours. Uh, the only other thing under building replacement cost is I recommend Mr. Doolan look through and see what, uh, each of those buildings are insured for. Uh, a lot of times the insurance carrier, C N A, carries a lot of insurance, uh, values those buildings lower. And, uh, when I went into Middleton, our high school that burned up was valued at three million. I looked at all the values and said, uh, I know for a fact that that high school at that point was more than three million. We reassessed it all. We uppered the amount of every school there. Unfortunately, when that school burnt down, the people that did the investigation on that came and had a good conversation with me saying, I wonder why you went from three million to ten million in the value and then it burnt down? My response was, well, uh, unfortunately it was undervalued, but if you look at all other seven schools, you'll see the exact same thing happen. And interesting enough, when the insurance replaced that high school, it was ten million one hundred thousand. So had we not done what I'm suggesting Mr. Doolan do and check his, and there's pro and con, because our business manager says, well, Rich, you know, by increasing, uh, seventy percent of the value, the premium's going up too. I said, yep, but unfortunately, uh, a little bit of premium going up replacing a building, had we not, uh, reassessed that insurance, I probably never would have been able to pass a bond for a high school because I'd had to pass a bond for a middle school first for seven million, then come back for fifty million for that high school, it would have been extremely tough. So with that, uh, I am more than glad, Mr. Chairman, to answer any questions anyone has, uh, explain anything further that I have there, knowing you guys have it. Mr. Doolan has these all electronically, uh, on a U S B. I recommend that the board say to him and the maintenance guys, keep that current. When you improve something out there, uh, upgrade the B C E Fs, let the patrons know that, you know, we've improved your facilities, we're upgrading this, that, uh, whatever it was it lacked, if that score was sixty-some, you may not work on those, but the other ones, you go from eighty to ninety, they need to know that. I did that consistently in Middleton, and when we got ready to pass that bond, the people knew exactly where we were with our facilities and that we were working extremely hard to keep all of their facilities in good up not, up top condition. Mr. Chairman, any questions?
I don't personally have questions right now. I, I have to digest and look at this. Would I open it up if any, any of our board members have any questions for, um, I, I'm, having said that, I, just going through this, I went through and put the values next to each one of the, the total upgrade costs next to it so I could see, you know, ten percent, twelve percent, but it was interesting to me that we have two buildings identical, um, the ag, the ag shop and the automotive building. And that's, you know, fairly significant amount, three hundred and eighty-four thousand and four hundred and thirty-two thousand, and I'm looking at the reports. Do you have maybe a little more, what, what's the difference in those two? As I look at the two reports, they're, they're similar, but there's a hundred and blow over a hundred thousand dollars difference in the two.
Yep. The score of eighty-four versus your score of eighty-two is only two off, but the items that, uh, roofs are similar there, uh, they're, they're pretty much similar with the exception of that two percent times your square foot each times your four hundred gave it to you.
So it's just, okay.
Yep. Good question. That's just a calculation. Any other questions? I would be more than glad for you to let Mr. Doolan know once you study this thoroughly. If you have any questions, he has my email, my texts, he can hit me. I'd be more than glad to respond back to him with any questions you may have. I think you have a good document now that will help guide you as far as budgeting goes, will guide you with your principals and your food service director, your maintenance people now, to give them a nice glance. Uh, it always helps, I think, not that I got any extra expertise, but bringing someone from the outside in to work with your maintenance people, looking over from a different perspective that is unbiased and, uh, you know, giving you, in my mis- estimation, a very valid, reliable report. Thank you very much for your time, and appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. I look forward to having a conversation. It's good, Mr. Doolan.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for helping receive that report.
Yes, sir. Speaking of reports, I'd like to ask Dave now to share with you about, uh, some results, state assistant results with, uh, twenty-two school year, twenty-three school year, respect.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I know that Mr. Doolan gave you guys, um, some results, and I was able to run, um, Mr. Doolan, if you'll pass that around, not just some results from our ISAT testing, our I station testing at Pioneer School, Park School, Middle School. That's just a summary report for you guys. Um, I'm learning as we're going here a little bit, uh, takes three months of data before we get that historical growth piece that we're going to look at, so next month we'll be able to start to see a little of the growth. This is just a summary. Um, at this point, um, the three schools are testing. You kind of see where they're at there, listed by tier, and, um, so if you have any questions after you have some time to review that, let me know. The other thing I want to point out is I know that Mr. Doolan, I think he, did he share this, um, this green spreadsheet with you guys? I think you guys should have that one. It's got the ISAT data, um, English Language Arts, Math and Science, and then also the I R I. One of the things that I want you guys to look at that is, um, there's been some changes with our state testing here over the last few years, so, um, I put some little asterisks on there for you. Twenty-twenty-two ISAT was the short version of the assessment. Twenty-twenty-three went back to the long version, so two kind of different tests there, different lengths of time, kids sitting for different, uh, tests there, so that sometimes affects your results there. Keep that in mind. Um, one of the things I want to really point out with the I R I too, um, because when you look at those results, you might be going, oh, my goodness, you know, some of these scores, they're, they're, we didn't see maybe the changes we'd like to see. And on the, um, on the state website, there was a note there that, that was really, I thought I would share this with you guys because it's something to consider. It just says that these results were provided to the S D E and local education agencies by I station and reflecting new set of norming standards that were applied in Idaho and nationwide. Though these, uh, through, uh, though these new norms reflected dip in student proficiency scores, the, the decrease is seen nationwide and is reflective of a shift in national scores for all early literacy students. So as a result, the twenty-twenty-three I R I data are not immediately comparable, excuse me, to the I R I data from, um, previous assessment years. So there was a change to the norming, so keep that in mind. These are, um, these scores are a little different because the norms were not the same norms as, as on the previous test. So one of the things that, um, I like to do with this, and you guys had asked if we go ahead and start doing a historical report, we've got twenty-two, twenty-three, just going to continue to add to this for you guys, so that we'll go twenty-four, twenty-five and so forth, so we have that historical report for you in this form. And one of the things that this is really useful for, for all of our building administrators and for all of our teachers is, it's a great conversation starter, okay? Look at the data, look at where we are in comparison to the state, and then from there, that's where we start to look at what are we going to do at a building level in our academic achievement initiatives to make sure that we're doing what you do for our students to improve. And then the last thing I will say is, um, I put a little darker gray on all those boxes. Those are the ones where we're, where we're above the state average, okay? I would say that all of our building administrators, we're sure that we want to have more of those dark gray boxes around there, so, um, but that does give you guys an idea kind of where we're at, some highlights on some things that we've done, and, uh, these are the, the data points that we're going to use to drive a lot of our conversations related to academic achievement in the district. Okay? All right? Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, let me answer the reporting, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions regarding your report? I look forward to the, the historical as we move forward with this, with this plan, we'll see improvements. We just want to leave it at improvements.
The document inside the superintendent report that's labeled, labeled Idaho power and Idaho taxpayers is just.
We'll get to that, yes, later, yes, sir.
Okay. Having had, heard all the reports and no questions so far, let's move right into our consent, consent agenda. Has everybody had the opportunity to look over our, um, minutes for our passport meetings? Any questions or changes that you think need to be made there? Okay? Uh, the current agenda, just, I, I think I'm, I have an idea, but Mr. Doolan, was there any changes that need to be made to our current agi- agenda moving forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay? Thank you. Consider the staff, uh, retirement resignation. I think, I think in the notes, we don't have any at this time, which is fantastic, but we do have one staff member that we want to talk about, um, for hiring.
Yes, sir. You'll remember, uh, last month, you, oh, we put a committee together, I think you sit on that committee, uh, to go out and look for a, uh, assistant business, business manager slash deputy clerk, and, uh, I think we interviewed for that position, and, uh, the committee was unanimous, and they would like to recommend hiring Barbara Schott, uh, start date of tomorrow. Do you have anything you have to say about the, uh?
It was a, it was a great interview. It's fantastic to find people that have, um, the experience that she has, and coming to us, um, will be a huge, huge benefit to, to Kyla and Riley. Sure. Schott, would you, would you stand? Back there, I, thanks for, thanks for standing. I think it would be, it would be my pleasure to, to tell the board that, um, we can't do a lot better than that, that it was a fantastic interview, and she comes with a lot of experience. It's going to be very helpful to our district. Next item on the, on this consent agenda is our financial report.
Oh, me? I'm typing. Oh, sorry. Yes, we are moving into the third month, and I'm so excited to have Barb here because she and I both were talking just over budget today, just a little briefly, because we didn't get much, but we're at twenty-two point two-nine percent. If you consider that this was our third month, our, um, September, our July, July, August, September, at eight point three-three, we could be about twenty-four, roughly twenty-four point nine-nine, almost twenty-five percent. So we're a little under budget there, but that's, that's okay. We're doing just fine. Um, um, I will tell you the difference on the Columbia Bank, um, September payroll is kind of a bugger, as all business manager will tell you, and, um, I had three, uh, employees that went into, uh, Percy that, they now split Percy people into, uh, paying difference on a classified and a certified, and so I had three that were listed as classified that should have been listed as certified, but Percy doesn't let you make that up in the next month. They tell you you have to pay at that month, and that's what happened. That's why there's a hundred and eighteen dollar difference, but it will get changed and, and be done next month, so there won't be a, a challenge in that. I did, um, I did get the, the, the several, we did get money for our safe and drug free for our M two automations that has come in, and I'm probably going to make a new fund because, just need more funds on the second page to, to read through, and I apologize, but that has to be tracked very carefully, so there are some that are coming off, there are some that are staying on, but, uh, that's one that I'm going to have to put in there. And I'd also like to recommend that, um, we track in that two-hundred group, um, the supplemental levy expenses, I know I've talked to you about this before, but when we got that House Bill two ninety-two, the first thing it did was buy down our, um, our supplemental levy. Well, we use our supplemental levy for things that are outside of what plant facility is. We use it for pay-to-play so that our athletes don't have to pay if it belonged to sports programs. We use it for some curriculum. We use it for a variety of things, some teachers, some full-day kindergarten, because we're only funded for half-day kindergarten teachers, so we do use it for salaries. Well, the House Bill two ninety-two is a plant facility only, so we did buy that, down that supplemental, I love it, but it's a reason why we have to keep it in mind of why we need to go out for it again so that our public understands that we're using some of those funds, even though it's being bought down, we're using those funds for different things that are outside of that, that two ninety-two. So I'm just coun- I'm just counseling you on that, and I probably will every meeting. How about that?
Awesome. No.
That's it. That's all I have, unless you have questions.
They're all pretty similar to what's going on. Any other questions? Any questions for you, Mel? Besides, can we turn the air conditioner off? Is that what you're, okay. Okay. Um, any bills that you have any concerns with? More questions about?
No.
All right, that brings us to the end of our consent agenda. I will entertain a motion, one way or the other.
Make motion that we approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion to accept and approve the consent agenda, and, um, all those in favor? Aye. It was unanimous? Thank you. All right, citizen comments. This brings us to this comment I made earlier. We have one, um, citizen, one individual that would like to come and visit with us, Ms. Davies, Davis, excuse me. Time is yours for three minutes, um, for the comments that you've prepared for us. Time is yours for three minutes for the comments that you've prepared for us.
My name's Gretchen Davis, I live in Zoll Core. I'm here representing some concerned students and their families, and just stakeholders in general. There were multiple discussions about religion at the September board meeting. One of the discussions was looking into saying a prayer at school board meetings. And you may have already found information about this since then, but in case you haven't, I'd recommend looking into Coles v. Cleveland Board of Education, 1999, and Doe v. Indian River School District, 2011. They specifically cite prayer at school board meetings as being unconstitutional. They reference your question about why it's okay for other legislative bodies, but not school boards. I am uncertain why religion was discussed at the previous board meeting, arranging school activities around religious functions, and wanting to include prayer at school board meetings does show a preference for religious organizations instead of neutrality that public schools should exhibit. Since it was brought up, I will draw your attention to the recent Fields of Faith event by the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. I reached out to the high school about some policies, I'm waiting to hear back. But it is my understanding the school board approves activities and transportation to them, and that would include the school bus that took the kids to that event. So if I'm incorrect, I welcome clarification from you on that. I implore the Middle School District to lead by example and choose to make decisions based on laws, not personal beliefs. Watching our elected officials and appointed school board trustees discuss and laugh about how to circumvent laws was unsettling. It's worth mentioning that the purpose of school board meetings is to discuss and make decisions about what is best for children in Weezer in regards to their educational needs. The Weezer School District is a public school system, the school district is not run by religious organizations, nor should it be influenced by them. Please consider focusing your time and efforts on providing a neutral and respectful education experience for the children in our community, thank you for your time.
Thanks. Like I said, we have two others, I appreciate your time to come and share your thoughts with us. They're always highly regarded in, as we go through trying to be better at what we do. And that is educating our kids in our public. We will save the others for when we talk about the curriculum conversation we have here in a few minutes. As we move into our action items, we've spent quite a few, quite a bit of time as a school board looking at policies. We have a, did I miss one?
Yes, WEA.
Oh, I sure did, sorry, WEA. We just changed, we just changed the way we're doing, working with the WEA, and I've got to remember how that is going, because we don't want you as public conversation to be a part of this. So thank you for being patient.
Why didn't you get to me, like you didn't, I just, I'll just let you know, I know. But we appreciate you putting us as an agenda item now, so that, I, we appreciate that greatly. So again, I'm Nicole Main, and I am co-president of the Weezer Education Association, so thank you for letting us share. I know last month, things were a little growly, but this, this month, I think people have, were, were kind of overcoming the surge of title wave that was coming out as the first of the school year. And people, I said, give me your, give me your good stuff going on. The third grade was, they love going on their Weezer history walk that they just took, and are thankful for community members and people who take time out of their days to share history of Weezer with kids. The middle school has a record number of girls that are involved in, it's called Tech Girls, and it's a STEM program, and there's a record number of girls involved in that, as well as a record number of girls involved in their academic team that goes around and competes. So that's awesome to see. I know many of us around the schools are very thankful for Mr. Shawn and all of the work, and he probably gets calls at midnight and 24/7, because we just appreciate all the work he has done to help us feel more comfortable with all of our technology and all the new stuff that has been thrown at us. So thank you, we want to thank Shawn. And Park School, we want to thank our maintenance people for keep, they keep coming back and they keep adjusting our HVAC, and some of us like it hot, some of us like it cold, and they're trying to do their best to keep everybody happy at Park School. As well as technology needs and reading needs, it's all, it seems like it's all kind of, the tsunami is subsiding, we'll put it that way. And I know the high school was, enjoyed a great homecoming week, lots, they, they thought it was a great, a larger turnout for the parade with football game than recent years, so they were excited about that. And then just always thankful to see those raises in our first paychecks in September, that's always a good sign. And, and also grateful and thankful for changing the calendar back to having conferences, so that we have that Friday off, and going back to the new old way of doing conferences, so.
The new old way.
The new old way, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your patience, Mr. Doolan, thank you for helping us to stay on the task, appreciate it. All right, policies, something that we absolutely need to be working on. For the public's knowledge, I, maybe you may or may not know, but we spend a lot of time recently, and have a, have a plan to spend lots of time until we get this done. Two weeks from now, the board will meet again on a special meeting to do nothing but policies. And, the last two months in a row, we have spent two and a half, three hours down here going through policies, and it's, we're making, I think we're making big strides to get through this and a plan to, to finish our policies within this school year. It might come before then, but it might take us until then as we go through these policies. So having said that, we have policies 1100 through the 3000s that we currently went through. Is there any, from the board, is there any policies in there that, that you feel like should not be considered as, is it, as a first reading, correct, Kyla? These, the 11s through the 3000s are a first reading, I know there's no actions, but is there any, any questions?
These are updates, they're not new policies so much, although there was one.
Yeah.
That 31, yeah, so, but, but the other ones were, were based on legislation that came back to us in the spring that we needed to move to change what we've already just recently approved, and get ready, that's probably gonna be your life, but that is.
We do have one policy in there that we will continue, we will continue to look at, and that is our gender identity and sexual orientation policy, number 3281.
And I can put that in as a first reading.
It is in there as a first reading, but it's okay, because we wanted to put in there so we could have the conversation, that it's, it's ongoing, and we want to continue to look at this.
So you're not gonna do, okay, okay.
We will not.
We will not move that one.
We will not move that into a second, a second reading at this time. Does anybody have any other questions or comments about that before we move into the 4000s?
Did we want to move it to a second reading so we can adjust it?
We want to, I think with that 3281, we want to adjust first, and then move to a first reading and move it forward. So Kyle, if you make note, we'll, we'll take that out of the first reading and look at furthering that policy.
So that one will be tabled, and everything else will move forward for a second reading?
Yes.
Just as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Any thoughts on that? Okay, so we'll, we'll consider this first reading of those 20 some policies. So the second part of these policies is, is the 4000s. We went through those as a first reading last month, and six weeks ago, we went through those in our special meeting. Any questions on the 4000s?
I have one question about 4000, what I had to. The first one was in regards to 4120, the current policy that's listed in the supporting documents that we received on assembly, is the old 4120 without the removal of paragraph three and page number three under the superintendent section.
Okay.
And just making sure that we have the correct documentation that we're looking at here on assembly, because it was the old one that did not have the edit that we suggested during our policy meeting. And then the second one was just verifying that we did not move 4200, I didn't see it in here, just verifying that we did move 4200.
I, I think 4200 was taken out.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so we're talking about that?
Yeah, that 4000 right there.
Okay.
The one that was attached to assembly.
Okay, I will get that done.
So, so we can, Kyle, if this, we can have, we can, we can make a motion, we can move to make all these a second reading, except for 4210, and bring that back to second reading next month, is that?
4210, you're, you're still considering that one?
Well, isn't that 4210 is the one that we needed to remove the paragraph? This is what we're removing.
4120.
Or excuse me, excuse me.
4120, I can remove that, and, and that's what you want to approve, so that will be fine.
So we'll just, we can make those changes and have a second reading next month, okay?
No, no, you can do a second reading this month, but I will make sure that that's done, because that was.
That, that edited, okay.
Underneath the recommended approval, it says in there that it was edited, but when I reviewed the actual document, it wasn't, so.
Yeah.
Thank you for looking, for seeing that. Any, any other questions about those? Was that the second one, and I totally missed that, you said you had two questions?
No, the second one was about 4200, but we already discussed this in the, so we go, okay.
Had to make sure that I get, get it back right here. Okay, so the 4000s, including that, recommended, make sure that the 4120 is fixed, is a second reading, so it takes an action to move forward.
I'll move to push the 4000s to the second reading.
So we have moved it to accept, accept that 4000 is a second reading, and seconded by Ms. Price. All those that are in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye. It was unanimous, it's vigorous, so we can move those into that category. The next part of our agenda then is, is talking about the novel that, that we, that wanted to be added in our BLA program at the middle school. Let's, let's, we, we have some people here, Mr. Doolan, to give us some, an update of how that committee went, is that correct?
Yes, sir. I've asked, I've asked Mrs. Clark, do you want us to hear from the community first, or?
Let's, let's, let's hear from the community on their thoughts, that, that's probably a good, a good point of action. So, Ms. Katie Morgan, would you be willing to come share your thoughts about this particular item?
Thanks for having me tonight. So I'm here to share my thoughts in regards to adding Coraline to the eighth grade reading list. I have a seventh grader at Weezer Middle School, and she's in the adult language arts, so she would be reading Coraline this year. First thing I'd say that the horror genre is developmentally appropriate for middle school students. The genre allows students to explore the risque and implications of the early teen years in a safe way. It can help children to accept that it's normal to experience fear, and can help build resiliency when fears are explored and understood. The horror genre offers insight into human nature, and often highlights bravery, problem solving, and perseverance. When taken in historical context, the horror genre can help students to explore how societal events impact popular horror themes in the past. Further, genre can be an excellent tool to inspire excitement in reading predestined readers. The evaluation of utilizing materials recommended within the approved curriculum should be done with educational goals of the curriculum in mind. Care must be taken not to diminish the educational opportunities of all children in the district through the lens of personal religious beliefs. In addition, if we begin haphazardly removing portions of the approved curriculum, which was one of the things that was discussed, removing the horror genre completely, I feel it sets a precedent that could have unseen consequences, where do you draw the line? Working within the approved curriculum, the, very, I think, very capable teachers at the Weezer Middle School Language Arts Department, it's left at the book Coraline, it's from a recommended reading list that is part of the approved curriculum already. It would take the place of the story The Monkey Paw. Coraline touches on the same themes as The Monkey Paw, but it's at a more accessible reading level for all readers. And additionally, the length being, that it's a novella, it just gave them the opportunity to add a second book. So otherwise, they would have only read The Outsiders this year, but the length fit in nicely for them. The teachers have planned their curriculum with this book included, and it was included in the syllabus that was sent home and signed by parents already of eighth grade students at the beginning of the year. It's already in there, and they didn't express any concerns at that time that it was up by any parents. The reading of the book would allow students to explore the concepts of foreshadowing, an unreliable narrator, and the concept of being careful what you wish for. It highlights the bravery, perseverance, and troncense of self exhibited by the protagonist. As a parent, I find the book to be completely appropriate for my child, and I have no reservations about being added to curriculum. I feel the language arts teachers are very capable professionals that will guide my students through discussion and reading of this book to the net benefit of my child.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more for the community input, Ms. Mickey Billy, would you like to take a little bit of time? Three minutes.
Thank you for your time. It was very interesting being asked to serve on this literary board, and it was great, I mean, just really great to have that discussion, being able to talk about that, and just, yeah, just being open to, from a parent perspective. And, I have three kids at the middle school, two in sixth grade, and two in, one in eighth grade. And so, it was something, as I went through and read this book, I felt, first I went into the meeting not knowing that we had the horror unit, so that's, you know, I went in with some questions, like, you know, as of, I guess, why? We're reading something that's, you know, scary, like, was it, you know, for Halloween, just, you know, time of year, that kind of a thing? And, so in that meeting, I was able to get a little bit further understanding, to guess that there is a horror unit, which I actually, I do not, I, I did not think that we needed to remove that from the curriculum. I feel like that has been approved. I agree that there are so many different things that we, we can see, and we can learn from different genres. So I, I believe it was the teacher who actually said if we don't approve the book, she would rather take that unit out, because it would be easier for them to teach. There were many units that they were not gonna be able to get to throughout the year, and so they had to take some of those out. I guess, just getting a little clarification, that they get to read two novels for the year. And so out of all of those units, I feel like there are, there are great things that we can learn from each, each genre. Spending the majority of time in, out of those two novels, I'm wondering, there are so many wonderful novels out there, why are we spending our time in horror? I just feel like that doesn't help my children, and, and I speak for mine, but I also speak for my friends and their children also, that I feel like we can learn foreshadowing, we can learn how to, you know, deal through emotions and things through different genres. We have history, we have fantasy, we have science fiction, we have, you know, I mean, just so many things that I think we can, we can use to learn those same things. So my suggestion was to go ahead and introduce horror as, you know, it's, it's there, and some people enjoy those kinds of books. And I think we have great librarians, we have great teachers who can help kids who are interested in that, they can steer them towards, you know, good classic books, or, you know, whatever helps them, you know, fulfill that, I don't know, that interest. But as far as reading that in the classroom, I don't know that that's where we need to be spending our time. I just feel like there are many other novels that would be more beneficial to our children. And, you know, from, from a mom, reading the book, there, I felt like it was, it was very mild for horror. So, I kept trying to find reasons why, you know, this would be great to. So, I kept trying to find reasons why, you know, this would be great to, to show our kids, and I couldn't come up with very many. And, and I was trying, I, you know, I, I felt like, yes, it talked about bravery, but I feel like there's a lot of other books that teach bravery or overcoming different issues, that doesn't deal with the, that doesn't bring in, like, the darkness and the creepiness. And so, as I read through the book, my question, as I put it down each night, was just, why? Is, is there a reason why this book would be beneficial to our children? For me approaching my children with this, and I, I didn't give them, you know, any more than just, this is the book, they've seen the movie before, and I just wanted to ask them, you know, what is your opinion? Is this something that you would want to read at school? And all three of them.
Ms. Billy, can you, sorry.
Yes.
We, we give three minutes, can you just wrap up really quick?
You bet, you bet, yep.
Thank you.
My last statement. All three of them, very different personalities, they said they want nothing to do with the book. My, my daughter in sixth grade said, you know, it gives her a dark, creepy, and she doesn't want to be filling her heads with those kinds of themes. And so, I speak, especially as a parent, of children who, who choose not to want to bring that into their minds, I think we need to respect them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. All committee input today, I appreciate everybody's thoughts. Ms. Clark?
Yes. Did you guys, did you receive the report or the request for that? So, I won't reread, reread that. A lot of that has been explained, and so, I guess, a little bit more to explain why it was on the syllabus in the first place. We didn't know, we thought originally going through that since it was in the approved curriculum, that that meant that it was okay. So, when we spoke with Mr. Davies, he said that we would need to form a committee, and I want to thank all of the members of the committee. It was, it turned out to be quite a commitment of their time, and so, I, we do appreciate their willingness to read the book and to have a discussion about that. So, the results, I'll just kind of, kind of go with the committee results. Five members would recommend Coraline as a book of choice for the unit, and three members said that they would not recommend it. One of those members did say that as a teacher, they asked me, so as a teacher, they would not recommend it, because they did not want to do controversial, they didn't want to teach something that was controversial. But as a parent, they would be okay with it being approved, and they asked that I, they would add that to the comments. Other than that, if there are questions about, about the explanation that you have for me, I'm willing to answer, or if there.
Just enjoy, it was an enjoyable read. I, you know, I thought it'd be a good book, my kids are older, but, or this week for Halloween, I thought we should read it. So, I, I did want to dive in and read that and understand what, what was being talked about, and I, I guess I appreciated the suspense, and I, I thought it had good, there were good things in it that I appreciated, the bravery and the, the connection with family and the, anyway, I, I guess I was, maybe that's where I'm confused, because I didn't understand why it was controversial, personally, so.
And, and like I said, on the, on the letter, the three members, it was for varying reasons, but some of the symbolism, and, which wouldn't be necessarily taught, but there was some symbolism attached to that, and then just the frightening nature of the book, and, and then the controversy that it may create.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
From a, from a standpoint of, of a parent has two, apparently two kids coming up into that learning system next year who will not be able to participate, or would not participate in the reading of that book. From the discussion in the committee, it was, I think, clear that the book was going to be read out loud in the classroom. So, just for, from a, from a board standpoint, can we explain, like, how that would be addressed for the kids that would not be able to participate in the classroom for the entire reading of that book, which would be, you know, two, three weeks, four weeks?
Yeah. So, there is an opt-out policy, and we would follow the policy that way. And then, that doesn't require board approval, because that's with the parent that you meet and, and pick an equal book.
And so, there would be concern that there would be learning loss from the student that would be removed from the classroom because of the parental choice on that?
Certainly, whenever students aren't in the classroom, that, then that's a consideration. So, we would have to meet those same standards and have that.
We would find a substitute, Ms. LaRue, to, 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 so no, no loss would happen, and it'd just be a substitute for what is transpiring in, in the classroom.
A substitute as far as material?
Yes, sir.
Materials.
From a learning standpoint, the student that's removed from the classroom is for the duration of the class, or is it only for the section of reading?
The section, just the section that is.
So, that they would return for the conversations about the work at that point?
I would think that, that would be, like, whatever the writing prompt is, the, the explanation of, like, forming a sentence, you know, I'm not sure exactly what the assignments would be, but then just how do you, how do you form the sentence, how do you do the different things like that? So, the vocabulary, but not the discussion about the, about the particular book.
I, I personally haven't read the book, so, I mean, the experts that have the, the committee, so, with, as we, as we work really hard as a, as a board to, to have these committees, and I appreciate Ms. Clark for, for being part of that committee, and probably the committee chairman or the member of that committee. Having eight, eight people on that committee, five members for, for the book to be used in this, in this section, three members against it. If, going by those numbers, I, I know how this, you know, this should go, could you give me a little bit of information? If, if this unit were skipped, what kind of, of work then does that put on the teacher? How, how hard is it now to recover the information that needs to be taught, the concepts that need to be taught, and to move to another unit this late in the game?
I think, I, I, it would be a matter of recalendering, whether they skip the unit or whether they just don't do Coraline. If they, if they, if they don't skip the unit, they would do Monkey's Paw, which is a shorter read, and they would have the materials created, the writing prompts and everything like that, that was right there. They would likely have to find stretch material, like, to, to fill out the difference there. So, what they tend to do is, and what they talked about was moving the Holocaust unit, and then the one teacher did say, well, we tend not to do the Holocaust unit, just because the Holocaust is a, a course that's covered at the high school, so we try not to do that unit at all, and that would be the unit that we wouldn't cover.
If we can.
If we, if we stay with the curriculum the way it is, so.
So, that's, that's kind of the option.
Yeah.
It's one or the other.
And then, the, the length of the book, the, the fact that it was just ninety pages is nice. It's, it's a way to get a longer read in, but not so long that they don't have time to cover it.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ms. Billy.
I guess I would like a motion that would go with the committee, and, and where they, at the end, they just kind of said the parents could be notified, and it sounds like arrangements could be made for people that, you know, just like with any, you know, we have the syllabus, but, I know that happens at the high school sometimes, kids opt out or bring both or different things. I guess that would be my motion that I would take, except for the, I would, that understanding that parents have the option to.
So, the, the motion that's been given is to take the committee's information that we have, and there are five members for, three against, and to approve this, this book, this added book, with, with the assumption, with the knowledge that parents can opt out, opt their kids out if that's what they so choose. Does anybody have a second or a alternate motion?
I will second that.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? What opposed? Okay. Sounds like we will move forward with that book. The next part of our agenda is, is to consider a three-year calendar committee. In the last couple of years, we have done one-year calendars, and since that's the whole sum of the tenure of my, you know, the school board, I didn't know that it was gone any different, but I've been assured that we generally in our, in our school district up until, to recently, we've had three-year contra, or three-year calendars, so we would like to appoint a committee to look at a three-year calendar moving forward, starting with the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Does anybody have any, does, does, do we need an action for this, Kyla?
Well, it's an ad hoc committee of yours, and I would at least have something, I think, were we going to speak something about that?
No.
I think that, I think that we had someone that was willing to chair that, right?
If you want. I was going to ask, Mr. Davies, with his corporate knowledge of doing this, and it is that time of year, and upon a ten, and this year, we do it for three more years, so.
Already three under us.
Dave, or we can just?
Mr. Davies, will you give us some information on what you would like to see, or, you know, maybe as, maybe as a board, we need to give you some recommendations?
Sure.
Or some, some?
Yes, I'd be happy to, to serve as the chair of the ad hoc committee. I've, I've done this a, a number of different times over the years, and really what makes it easiest for us as a committee is if you guys will give us some guidance, like, you know, when we moved to that four-day school week, one of the things, I know that you guys were pretty clear about, is you didn't want instructional hours affected negatively. So, if we know those kinds of specifics ahead of time, it just makes it so much easier for us to plan, so we know exactly what we need to do. And typically, what I will tell you, and people that are in the room here that have actually helped out with our calendar committee in the past, really the flexibility we have is start date and end date, obviously, and then depending on how we want to do our vacations, the historical vacations, you know, throughout the school year, you know, some school districts have gone to a week at Thanksgiving, some have gone a little longer at Christmas time. But if we know that we have, have to keep a fixed number of instructional hours, where we are currently, for example, or if you wanted to add instructional hours or whatever, just so we know that, then it makes it so much easier for us to plan, because really all we do is just look at maybe a possible couple of different start and end dates, a couple of little different variations for, for vacations throughout the year, because the focus is then, we know we have to keep the same number of instructional hours. So, if you guys can give us some guidance like that going into this, then it makes it easier for us to plan and bring back some recommended calendars for you guys. Take a look at that. So, so any thoughts you guys might have, any questions that you're wondering, or anything you'd like me to take to that committee from the board? I'd be happy to do that, so we can put together calendars that you guys can review.
One, one question I have is, is this year, we, we opted into a week for the teach, a week longer for the teachers to prepare for, for this new curriculum. In, in a three-year calendar, I would question and, and like, feedback from the committee, is that one week necessary for the next three years?
Okay, true. And that could be a great conversation starter for the committee, and then we'll bring back the rationale. And we'll, just so you guys know, as the, as the person in charge of the calendar committee, what I, what I do is I, I reach out and I get teachers, administrators from all the different buildings, and then I solicit help from parents in the community, and a lot of times, I try to reach out to parents that have kids in multiple schools, because they have the secondary view and the elementary view, they kind of look at those things, and that really helps us work that out. So, typically turns out to be about a, maybe a ten-person committee, and would, would love to have a, a board member, if, if you're willing to serve on that as well, just so we can all be part of that conversation. So, that's how I've handled it in the past. If you want to give me other recommendations, that'd be great, but like I said, I'm more than happy to help out with that.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Davies. Just one more thing for you to do. All right, one more item on this, this part of it, and that's the name of, I'm not even going to be able to say that right.
Signatories.
Of the Weezer High School bank account. Can you maybe give us a little information, either Mr. Doolan or Kyla on that?
Kyla.
Well, evidently, because Mr. Davies moved, and because we have a new bank, because Columbia became Unpois, and there were just a, there was just a perfect storm, let's say that, and so, all of these changes, and so, Casey Sweet, who was the business manager at the high school, went down, thinking it was just a simple matter of change, because we have the bank account, and all she needed to do was to add Mr. Dickerson, and much to her surprise, she found out Mr. Davies is still on there, and Mr. Todd Zucker, who hasn't been in our district for a number of years, is still on there. And so, we really need to clean house and get the signatories correct and right, and so it would be Casey Sweet, and then Drew, and then Casey Clark, and then I have been a signer before, only because if these two are out of town, Casey might need a check, and so I can sign on it. But that, that's the story. So, they just need a motion so that they can give the board minutes, minutes to Unpois Bank to state that. Internet child, there you go.
So, so we need a motion to adjust?
To approve those, to approve the signatories, and you can just say who they are, and then, with Unpois Bank, and then they can go down and get that paperwork done.
And right now, having four people, Mr. Dickerson, Casey Sweet, Miss Casey Clark, and Kyla, that you would be enough?
Yes, that would be plain enough. And they, they have two signature check, yeah, so they have two signatures on those checks.
So, I would entertain a motion for that to take place.
I'll make that motion to replace the new signers on the Unpois Bank, Mr. Dickerson, Casey Sweet, Arnett, and Casey Clark, and Dickerson.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor of, of this change? Aye. There was, we unanimous. That brings us to an end of our action items. We do have a couple of discussion items. Let's, let's go ahead and go through these discussion items, Mr. Doolan, and, and we will then take a break.
Okay.
From, and, and move on from there.
Yes, sir. Oh, you, you remember last month, I think, Ms. LaRue tasked me with going out and finding the key players to have a, a tabletop discussion about our, our emergency procedures in reference to, if buses have to pick us up, prior to that, where do we go? Buzz is picking us, Buzz is picking us up, taking us to the, the Vendo, what's the procedure? So, what I've done, I've reached out to our SRO, he's reached out to his counterparts, and I've reached out to May and, and the ones that are in the district, and on the twenty-fourth of October, we're going to have a nine to eleven, we're going to have a round top, a roundtable discussion in reference. round top, a round table discussion in reference of those, those items. We'll have a breakfast, a little, little breakfast and then we'll roll right into it, letting every, everybody tell us their part and then we'll put it to a plan and we'll bring it back to you for, for discussion. Remember from, from the, the incident all the way through the pickup at the Vendo and all those pieces in between with all the key players. So again, 24th of October, nine to 11, right here in the boardroom. Your whole board's welcome if you want, or just send a couple or one, doesn't matter, but we're going to, we're going to get that done and brief you when we got a better plan.
Can I suggest, if you're planning on going, would you let me in so I can post that?
Yes, I was, I was just going to say if-
Thank you.
We're, we may all be invited, but if, if we're going to attend that, if there's more than two of us there, we need to post that in our community. So thank you for the invite and any of you that, that would like to attend that and Mr. Doolan, I would like to be there. We would, we would like, we'd like to be there, but we need to do the right thing in our, with our community as well. And thank you for kickstarting that.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate, appreciate your time. I gotta remember to hit save when I make a note because it goes away. The next item for discussion is Idaho Power and this is a very interesting discussion that we need to have that we learned about in our regional meetings. I'm, I'm not even going to try to paraphrase, Mr. Doolan, if you're, just let us know, sure, why that needs to be talked about.
Well, I got, I got about three key, key, key bullets for, for the audience as well as, as the board because what it boils down to is patrons paying back, back some money. Bullet number one is this, Idaho Power is suing to have the value of their operating property decreased to the value used by the railroads. Bullet number two, they're asking for a refund on property taxes received from 2019 to 2022. Bullet number three, moving forward, the burden for the decrease of Idaho power will fall to local taxpayers, predominantly agriculture and homeowners. And let me just add this too, if their lawsuit prevails, what will come down is called a judgment levy. And a judgment levy needs no votes. A judgment levy says that they'll go out and say what they need and, and will be responsible, the patrons will be responsible for paying that. So it's not all bad news. The good, the good news is that ISBA has known about this since the mid, mid-month and they're working with the legislature to try to get that, try to get that so the burden won't be on the taxpayers. So with that said, calls to your congressmen, calls to your, your folks that can make the decisions to stop this would be, would be, it behooves the patrons to do that, to try to get, nobody wants more, more taxes, so with that said.
Well, I think the key thing is that it does open the door for-
Other companies.
All the other businesses and that.
Yes, ma'am.
Creates a huge tax increase for everybody else.
So this was, this was actually a discussion to, to, for you all and for our community because it will directly affect any future levies or any future asks that we have in the community to help us with our, you know, $2 million plus dollars that we have to, to fix our buildings per year for the next five years, if that's how we, you know, do our budget later. But, you know, we're looking at substantial money to, to work in our buildings and I would love to be able to say that we can budget for that, but we don't know that. So every time we, our community gets taxed, it, it directly affects the way we are doing business ourselves. So that, that's the reasoning for that, that update and that discussion. I appreciate you bringing those bullets forward so that we can hear them. Future agenda items, anybody have any future agenda items that, that you would like to see as a board on our agenda that we can write down today's? We've got more than today to come up with this, but now's a perfect time if you have something on your mind. Done? Okay, we can, we can continue that just as long as we get them on the agenda for you. They have to be posted next month, we'll be okay. Okay, Mr. Doolan and board, I know some of us already took our break, but let's, let's take a break and we will come back to communication and information at that point. Or communication, let's do communication first because then we do have an executive session. I apologize for my lack of clarity here, but we, we do have an executive session and everybody will be advised to, to leave at that point anyway. So having clearly thought through that, do we have any communication?
No, sir.
Well, that's perfect. That's perfect. I'm glad we took the time to say that there's no communication.
I didn't want to.
Let us take a break and, and we will have an executive session afterwards. So you all, thank you for coming, appreciate your time and evidence.